Hello.
Gotta make sure the sound is on on your.
It is on, yeah. Now it's got a, the screen is just white.
No, I use my phone.
There's no volume, there's no sound.
Nobody's talking. I'm muted, you don't talk.
What?
I'm gonna unmute you, don't talk till you wanna talk.
We can't hear the proceedings, I think there's people talking at this table, but.
I can hear you now.
Yeah, but to just be, Mr. Laval and Ms. Kerman, you're on the board, but can you hear them?
No, I can't hear anybody, Robert, except you right now on my daughter's phone. The screen, the screen on my computer is blank, well, it's not blank, it's colored, but I can't see anything. There's nobody, heads or anything.
You know, I'll just be.
Can you hear them?
No.
No.
Does anyone hear?
Mrs. Kerman, we see you talking, but you're on mute, so we cannot hear you.
Judith, you're on mute. It was just on.
Mr. Laval, are you, is the proceedings are happening, but we can't hear the proceedings?
I can't hear either.
You can't hear them either, okay.
No.
Can they hear us?
I have no idea. This is the second week in a row we've had this kind of catastrophe.
Do you have the.
I can't hear them either, but I can hear you guys.
Yes.
This is Andrew Weebin, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine, yes.
But nobody can hear the meeting.
But nobody can hear the meeting, the meeting's proceeding, but no one can hear it. Does anyone have a direct, Mrs. Kerman or Mr. Laval, do you have a text or a phone that you can get through to them at the meeting?
Maybe they just put it on. This week it didn't work, so I'll try it again right now.
Alex? Alex? Let's see if you can get it on.
I'm muted, me.
Alright, so what?
We're gonna get an echo.
I'm gonna message them. So what's going on here?
No, it's gonna be here.
No, I'm gonna message them.
Message them what?
This computer audio.
Try it again. Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
We can hear you now. Hello? Well, if you turn that off and I turn my mic, turn on my speaker. Okay, so now my speaker's on and my, and my mic is on.
This is Andrew's Weebin, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, so we'll just have to go through my machine then.
Yes, I had to go through a cell phone.
John, do you hear us?
Yes, I can, Judith.
Okay, well, I guess we just have to use my machine then, because. Alright. Somebody's phone is ringing, that's ours.
Goodness. Sorry for the whole private sound issues, but we're going through Judy's computers. So, Peters, let's start the meeting, as long as everybody can hear us, give me a nod.
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I'd like to call to order the regular hybrid meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And do we have any updates to the agenda?
We do not.
We do have a quorum.
Yes.
So on the communications and announcements, we have a review from Community Planning and Environmental Associates for Kalamar Lane. And we have a statement and photos from Jim Moran regarding Planning Board Case twenty-three oh nine nine five eight. So, the first thing we have is a public hearing that was recessed. So, it is RS Equities Trust in the estate of Betsy Stang, Planning Board Case twenty-three dash zero nine nine five B. This is a recessed public hearing of a subdivision application for a lot line revision to revise lot lines of two parcels, resulting in two lots of six acres and seventy-four point one six acres in the R five zoning district, located at six through six Wittenberg Road and its contiguous lot in Wittenberg. And the rep is Patty Brooks of Control Point Associates.
We'll do the minutes after we're done with the public hearing.
So, make a motion to open the recessed public hearing.
So moved.
One favor.
Aye.
Okay.
So, one more chance, questions, comments from the public, this is, again, this is recessed, we had this last meeting. If there's anyone who's here to speak, please let us know now.
Hey, good evening, Melissa, this is Jim Moran, I hope you're well and I hope everybody's doing well, and I appreciate the opportunity to just weigh in on this, and this has been an ongoing discussion, I think, for many, many years, Robert and I have had several conversations standing on Joanette Lane about what we thought the future of our proper, our respective properties would be. And, you know, I remain a little bit confused, I know it's a lot line adjustment, I understand the premise of a lot line adjustment, I know it's considered a minor subdivision, et cetera, et cetera, but when I look at it pragmatically, you know, prior to the lot line adjustment, we have a seventy-nine acre single parcel, and we have a one acre non-complying parcel that can't be developed, and post lot line adjustment, we've got two lots, so in a simple layman's mind, that in effect is a subdivision, you know, veiled in a lot line adjustment process, so, you know, I struggle with that. I do believe it is creating a new lot that is a little bit more than a lot line adjustment. Secondly, I'm struggling with, with the right-of-way premise that exists, the acquisition of, let's call it the one acre parcel, I think it's slightly bigger than that, but the one acre parcel, I believe, carried with it a right-of-way over the lands of what's now the Hope Warren property. The seventy-nine acre parcel carried with it a right-of-way off, of the property with which we're the owners, of which were the owners on Joanette Lane. By creating a new six acre lot, I'm, I'm concerned that we're extending a right-of-way, you know, and I don't know if it's unlawfully or not, I'm just, again, pragmatically, it seems odd that you can continue to extend a right-of-way, whether it's off Joanette Lane from a seventy-nine acre parcel to a, to a new six acre parcel, or over the Hope Warren right-of-way, the one acre to a new five, a new six acre parcel, so, you know, again, pragmatically, it seems inconsistent with, with the premise of a subdivision or a lot line adjustment. And, you know, this is probably beyond the planning board consideration, but, you know, looking forward, the premise, as I understand from Robert, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to construct a single-family home on that property. My understanding of the ability to develop is predicated upon a road that is, in fact, quote-unquote, developed, and has the ability to accommodate emergency vehicles both to and from the property itself, and clearly, clearly, Joanette Lane does not accommodate two vehicles in both directions, it, at this point, barely accommodates one. I did send some photos, they're not the best, one, because it's snow-covered, and two, you don't really, you don't really grasp the erosion and elevation issues that exist at that property, but again, I think that might be beyond your consideration as relates to the lot line. So, you know, perhaps my concerns are with the, with the fact that this, in my opinion, is a subdivision and requires further consideration, and two, really, probably beyond your consideration, as I said, is what happens next, and how does that property actually get developed? The last point I'll make is, right-of-way is not, rights-of-way notwithstanding, there is access to this property, whether you call it a six acre parcel, a seventy-four acre parcel, or seventy-nine acre parcel, there is access to this property over land that's already owned by Mr. Stang. So, I'm confused as to why there needs to be development and a lot line adjustment in the first place, and whether or not the fact that other access exists alters the premise of a lot line adjustment, so. That's it, I appreciate the time to weigh in on this.
Thanks, thanks, Jim.
Consideration.
Um, Mr. Stang and his attorney is online, if they'd like to comment at all, they are welcome to right now.
Yes, this is Andrew's Weebin, I'm Mr. Stang's attorney. I think that perhaps there's a little confusion here on the part of Moran's, Mr. Stang does not own the seventy-nine acre parcel. It is owned by his son, who inherited from his late mother, from whom Mr. Stang was divorced. Mr. Stang intends to purchase the five acres from his son. So this has not, has nothing to do with Mr. Stang, young Mr. Stang, or his acreage that he owns, this is a parcel created for a new, that will be enlarged for a new owner, who does not own any property other than the one acre at this time. So I think there's a little confusion, and I'd just like to say for the record that I certainly agree with Mr. Moran that the considerations regarding some of the items that he's raised are, have, this has already said that that's beyond his interest and the scope of your inquiry. I just want to say for the record that we do not share, that is, Mr. Stang nor I share, Mr. Moran's view that the road is part of the Moran property. I just wanted to say that for the record, I don't think this is an issue before this board, and I think this board has indicated that's not an issue before you, but I did not want the record to go, you know, without recognizing that, making that statement.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Weebin, it's Jim Moran again, thank you for your comments, I'd, I'd respond in two fashions, first of all, I think the ownership of the actual road itself, I believe that that was undisputed, and certainly has been proven by our title searches, and I'm sure by yours. But secondly, you raise an interesting issue here, you're telling me that the seventy-nine acres is owned by some other entity. My understanding is, A, a lot line adjustment needs to be between two common ownerships, and secondly, you're telling me that Mr. Stang is going to purchase five acres of the seventy-nine acres, well, I don't know how that can be without that being a subdivision.
Let me try this, Andy, if I might, Jim.
Sure, good.
You know, we spoke about this, as you said, on the road there, we spoke about, and you had no problem, so I'm I'm shocked and surprised that you're taking this position, because you had no problem with rebuilding a house up, up on that ledge, and I told, and you know that Betsy owned the property, as I left, as I left it, I gave it to her when we divorced, and, and she left it to our son, who controls that seventy-nine acres, I bought in the name of an RS Equities Trust, the one and a third acre, so the RS Equities Trust is applying for an expansion of its one and a third acre, and that's, lot line adjustment gets adjusted between two separate tax lots, and these are two separate tax lots, one of which is gonna get larger from one and a third to six and a third acres, and the other one is gonna get smaller from seventy-nine point one four acres to seventy-four point one four acres, that's the transaction that's happening here, and the, the, that will happen subsequent to the approval by the planning board of the lot line adjustment, just to clarify the, the transaction and what's happening and who owns what. And I, I plan to build a house there, and you and your wife both thought it was a great idea, and I was gonna straighten out the area in front of your driveway, in connection with making that road accessible to the property on Joanette Lane, so I'm kinda surprised at your change in heart and change in mind and the way in which you look at this thing, it's nothing more than me building a house on the property that I used to own four hundred acres there, of which three hundred I've given to the, I sold to the city of New York to keep Forever Wild, so that's, that's, you know, that's all part of the process here.
Okay, I, listen, I don't know that the planning board needs to understand what you and I discussed on the road. Our, our consideration, we were developing at that point in time, our first question to you was, well, terrific, show us, show us your plans, show us how you plan to develop this, show us how you plan to achieve utilities, et cetera, et cetera, and, and we never got that, Robert, secondly.
Well, you don't, we haven't had ready for this.
Hold on, I believe, I believe I have the floor. Secondly, your plans changed subsequent to that. You came before this board, I think, a year and a half ago, about developing a thirty acre parcel and a twenty-five acre parcel, so, you know, it's.
Guys, we're gonna, we're gonna bring this back, this is a neighbor conversation, you can feel free to.
Yeah, no, Melissa, Melissa, you're absolutely right, but I'm.
Back to the planning board, I'm gonna give control back over to the chair, typically it's three minutes you have to speak.
Okay, I didn't understand, Melissa.
Thank you. Peter, sorry.
Okay. This is Matt Spiller, I live up the hill, one of two people that live up the hill, near some road. The road is small, in particular, once you pass a gate, if you pass sixteen or seventeen, Joanette Lane, very narrow. I'm curious, just because myself and my partner over there, and as we come down, it's, it's impossible to pass another car, and reverse is incredibly challenging for my partner, so I'm asking this question in concern of that. Is, if that property were to happen, and all of the lot line adjustments happen, how, how would you be, and this, I guess, is for Roger and Mr. Stang, then how would you be accessing that with, with construction trucks and all of that sort of thing?
Okay, let me explain, I know Melissa has outlined this before, but let me explain it again, what we have before us. We have two lots of record, we have a small lot, a one acre lot, which has a right-of-way to it, it's a legal lot of record, and we have a bigger lot, that's a legal lot of record, and what's happening now is there's a lot line revision between those two lots. Now, as far as the access to the right-of-way to the first lot of record, if it's a civil issue, there's nothing the planning board can deal with, we have before us, the county has a lot with access to it, the legal lot. And if there's any question about the legality, that's civil, as far as the planning board goes. So the next step is, all the planning board is looking at is revising the lot line. When the person, whoever it is, wants to build, they'll have to go to the building department to get a building permit. That road then has to be approved by the highway department, which it has already, we have a letter from the highway department, but when they go to build, they will again have the highway department to make sure the road is accessible for the things that you say, and that's up to the highway department. All we have before is just a lot line revision. And I, I understand the owners on that road, because I happen to know that road. I can certainly appreciate everybody's concern about extra traffic, not only during construction, but throughout. But the, the planning board has no say about what happens when the building department makes their decisions, okay? So, we're not approving a building or anything, we're just approving a lot line revision, which is legally before us.
Because it's already got legal access to the smaller lot, that's already there, it's not changing.
I believe it's, it's a tough one, and I understand that they could get access from the other side of the road, they could access the car, but that's not before us.
I'll have his hand up.
John.
Question, Mr. Moran made a, made a statement that the one acre lot was undeveloped, why?
Is that question addressed to me or to the planning commission?
Well, I guess it's two, since you made the statement.
Yeah, well, my understanding is we're in a five acre zone, I think, not quite sure whether that lot specifically might be in the three acre zone, but it's a legally non-complying lot. I'm not sure how you could develop it.
It can be developed because it's grandfathered, and when the lot line revision goes into effect, it will be a legal, it will be conforming, it will be made conforming.
Understood, I also understood that lot line adjustments had to be between two common ownership.
Early on, you made a statement that it's undeveloped.
Yes.
Color the entire presentation, because that's simply not true.
Then it's my misunderstanding, I was under the understanding you could not develop that lot, it was already developed, you could not further develop it, so my mistake, I'm not a zoning expert.
Okay.
Hey, let me answer that, I have to understand that the county has these as legal lots, correct, there's a county-approved lots. If anybody has issues about legalities, again, that's civil, we cannot decide who owns what. We're dealing with, the county has two lots that we are approving a lot line revision between. That's basically where we're at.
I'm sorry, but if I may ask, didn't, wasn't the statement made that the lot line adjustment had to be between two adjoining property owners of, of agreement ownership?
It could be, it could be complete strangers.
It could be.
That this guy, that they built a shed on their, on their neighbor's parcel, it doesn't have to be the same entity, I'm not, I'm not sure where you got that one.
But the five acres, the five acres.
That's right.
Again, as a legal lot, as an SBL, a lot number, that is a lot of record.
Understood, I want, I'm trying to understand how the five acre piece that's being adjoined under the lot line adjustment, how is the five acre piece in itself a legal lot, Mr. Weebin said that that lot had to be purchased.
It is not, it is not a separate legal lot. It is going to be part of a legal lot, it is now part of a different legal lot, when you change the lot line, the ownership will be transferred, of course, you'll buy it presumably, but it's not a subdivision, it's simply a change in the lot line that involves transfer of ownership of part of the land.
I don't know how you buy five acres of a seventy-nine acre piece and it's not a subdivision, that's where I'm, that's what I'm struggling with.
Because it is being added to an existing lot of record, it's not creating a new lot.
It was legal prior, we have to go by what the county says.
And furthermore, from the planning, at this point, if we were taking a lot that is non-conforming and making it a conformable lot, which is what we have to do. So that's, that's our mission, is to keep things in compliance, and that makes that lot become compliant. So, I'm sorry if you guys have legal questions, you'll have to speak to an attorney, but as far as the planning board's concerned, this is just a lot line change between two lots. There's anybody other questions? Or do you think a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
One favor.
Fine.
Okay. So, gonna make a motion to approve the application as presented. This is not, of course, what the resolution is, is the application.
I'm moved we approved the application as presented.
One favor.
Hi, you need seconds. So you got it all in favor? Now, I would like to move most, move a curve of approval of the most recent minutes.
Second?
Indeed.
Wonderful, all up.
Aye.
Thanks, alright, let's go to Lori.
Right away, it's Lori.
Thank you very much.
Hey!
Thank you very much, all, okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now a sketch plan review, which is Howenstein Revocable Family Trust Special Use Permit twenty-three dash zero six seven three. This is a review and remediation plan, Lori Rastin, of the special use permit application to remedy a violation for tree removal and aesthetic overlay in R five zoning district located at three five eight Abbey Road in Altria. And the evidence for Mark and Karen.
Lori is here, she's on Zoom. At least I'm filming that story.
Yes. Lori, you wanna tell us a little bit, everybody did read the report, and we thank, it was our way for being our hero for.
What did you say, I'm sorry?
It's all good, so, we thank you for being our hero forester.
Oh, I, you guys make me feel so honored, thank you so much, I, I really appreciate you all, thank you. Did you want me to, um, basically verbally review the report? Okay, so, Mark and Karen, what wonderful people, they, when I went to go visit with them, they were just so heartbroken over what happened on their property, and fortunately, they were able to stop the tree cutting. As you saw the pictures that I provided in the report, in my professional opinion, I really don't think, you know, it's, it's that bad. I understand if I owned the property, I'd be devastated, especially having then learned that there was a special use permit for such a thing. You know, and, and so I really think that with the, you know, just replacing the trees that were harvested with fast-growing trees, like I mentioned, with eastern white pine, Norway spruce, especially since they're purchasing six footers, you know, I think that the Norway spruce, they really have these nice swooping branches that I think will fill in the bottom of their property on Middleway Road, so, the neighbor who's across the street, you know, I don't think. And then, using the chips from the, the wood that was cut as like mulching material, I think that's really spot on. And that's, that's really about it as far as the remediation of the trees, the one thing that I'm just most concerned with is about the use of Middleway Road, you know, and as long as the contractor provides, you know, like I said, the schematics of like, okay, because it's a significant drainage ditch, you know, on that side of the road, so just as long as we make sure that there's no sedimentation and erosion, and the one thing that I failed to include in the report that I just thought about was that, you know, when the contractor is, is going onto the property with large, you know, equipment, like trucks, or maybe a little excavator, or wood chippers, that with that bridge, on either side of the bridge, essentially, the ingress and egress that's created, there should be a sign on both, signs on both sides of ingress and egress that say, you know, trucks entering, you know, so that at least people coming on to Middleway Road or going off Middleway Road can anticipate that there's some quote-unquote, "construction" happening, and just slow down, you know, just for safety purposes for the pedestrians.
During, during, during the time of the installation of the trees, you mean?
Well, it's not about the installation of the trees, it's about the, the, the trucks coming on and off, you know, a low, a low boy's gonna have to come and drop off. Yeah, yeah, so.
Right. We can add that, that's a good idea.
Okay, thanks, so, yeah, other than that, plant some fast-growing trees and you're good to go, so.
Thank you very much, Lori, excellent report, the guys, I guess, have seen it, admitted, and the great pictures, Lori, that really showed what we needed to see. So I think if the board is okay, we've solved that issue. So I'd like to make a. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the application pending draft resolutions. So moved on favor? Okay.
Thank you, Lori.
Great, yes, oh, you're welcome, my pleasure. And if you have any, if any of you have any questions or you need help with anything, you know how to reach me, I'm happy to, happy to be there, so.
Thanks Lori so much.
You're welcome, thanks all for the opportunity. Have a good night. Yeah.
Mark, we've got some paperwork and stuff. We just got, as you know, I've talked to him about it, so really just paperwork after this, but we're on the path to rectifying a violation and you guys are doing a great job.
So, so you'll send us something just to, whatever else we need? Melissa, okay?
Yes, and you call me if you have any questions.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, board.
Appreciate it.
Thanks guys.
Thanks Lori.
John, did you have a question?
Thank you.
No. Okay.
Okay. The next sketch plan review is David and Allison Pelican and the Special Use Permit 23 dash 0674. The sketch plan review of a special use permit application to construct a barn within the R3, R5 scenic overlay zoning district located at 11 Lyons Way in Shady. And the rep is Philip Marshall. If you'd like to tell the board about your plan.
I can bring up, I can bring up the plan if you guys want it.
Hi Philip.
Hi, Lori. I was just approached to, by David and he said he wanted to have, make a space for an art studio and I proposed to build him a nice post of being barned using local materials. And so we designed it and we submitted it to the building department and Melissa has helped me get, get me to this point to present it to you.
Okay. Well, I'll start with the basic questions the planning board would have. Number one, will there be a large amount of tree clearing to the barn?
No, and we're not going to put another driveway to it. We're just going to do a walkway up to it.
Okay. The next issue that the planning board has to deal with in the scenic overlay is glazing. Are there going to be a lot of windows in the barn?
So there's going to be some double hung windows on the front of it. I, you know, I kind of thought, well, you're not going to really see them because it's, because of where it is, but we're kind of like doing sort of old fashioned design, double hung windows, two over two or four over four. So it's going to look like an old Woodstock building, basically.
So definitely less than 25% of the wall space?
I will bring it up in a second.
Philip, the question is, the window space is less than 25% of the building?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, the next question the planning board will have is lighting. Is there any outside lighting proposed? And if so, it needs to be dark and compliant.
Is this, is this the correct drawing?
Yes.
Okay.
Who knows, on the other side? Over the 25%?
Yes. Which side is south facing?
Which side is south facing?
The, 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 uh, number one on the top left.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it needs to be lower than 25%. Would you be acceptable having a non-reflective glazing?
Yes.
That would be great. That would solve our problem if you use non-reflective window glazing on that side.
Yeah, and we're going to use, like, like, the standing steam roof will be like, we proposed antique bronze, so it would kind of really fit in.
Are you going to have screens on these double hungs?
Oh, we were thinking about them, yeah. But they would be dark.
Because that would also, that would also help with the, with the reflection if it had screen, if they had screens.
And black screens.
Yeah, the next question is the color scheme. What is, what type of roof and color of roof?
So we proposed a metal roof and it'll be an antique barn, antique bronze, sorry. And the actual siding would be left as wood, as eastern white pine.
So it'll weather to gray and it'll be.
Yeah.
It'll be fresh wood when it's first put up?
Yes.
Pretty much the questions other than its visibility from afar, which I know that's bad. I don't think there is anybody.
Do we need drones?
Not for, this is not a brand new construction. So the drones do come into play, but one of my concerns, this is a barn. It's already an established parcel.
I'm looking at the.
No trees are being cut.
Okay.
Let me look at, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the.
Well, we should probably do a site visit, just to be.
We should do a site visit.
But you, but you're not going to start yet for a drone.
Sorry, is the barn, is the proposed barn staked out so that a planning board member can go up and take a look where the barn's going to be?
No, but I could, I could easily, I could easily do that with some like orange marking tape.
Perfect.
I'm, I'm going to turn on.
So Philip, the board will do a site visit just to check. We just need to make sure it's not visible, this is a scenic overlay. Your willingness to do the windows that we make is great. The colors are great, so.
So this is the property here, right?
Yep.
And this is the house down where my little.
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to be putting it up kind of behind it?
Just behind the house, yeah, like.
Yeah, because it's pretty visible. I'm just wondering. Yeah, it's quite a steep.
Looks pretty damn forested there. Okay, so as long as it's staked out where the barn is going to be and we're going to pull up there and take a look.
That's mostly deciduous trees, but it looks like there's some, some evergreens downslope below your house, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to suggest you consider dark stain because it's going to take a while for it to weather to being gray.
Any volunteers to take a ride up there?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I love it. As soon as, I'll take all those volunteers. I just love this.
No trips are good.
As soon as you get it staked out, shoot me an email or give me a call and then I'll get my team on it.
Okay.
And then we'll bring it out. Thank you.
Am I good?
You're good.
You're good. Let me know when it's staked out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next case is again a sketch plan review, was a third one. This is Rodrigo and Maria Carlos, planning board case 22 dash 1137D. This is the third sketch plan review of a subdivision application to simplify one lot of 31.91 acres into three lots, 25.9142 acres in the R3 zoning district located on John Joy Road in Woodstock. Represents Capitol National Services, but we see Roddy's here. So I don't have to remember any members, but a whole issue, I wanted to see the line of buffer on the wetlands and that the buildings were outside of that.
Yeah, and I've got the.
You know, see, I have another one here. Do we see it now?
But it's all the damage, isn't it? A real piece of paper.
I'm clicking on the wrong button. There we go. So there is your undivided property and you're going to. So you're putting it up here? I can't. Okay, that's that little notch, I see the notch. And the house is going to go up there near the road, right? So kind of what I'm wiggling my hand around on, is that pretty much where it is? Well, my, my, where my map shows wetland is subject to what a wetlands delineator can actually identify. So this is kind of alerting us that we have something that needs to be delineated rather than my saying it's absolutely. Yeah, that's my point. What you've got on the survey map.
Just trying to tell them all.
Right. We've got, we've got on your survey map, since it's been done by a certified engineer, that is what we would take to be accurate more than what I show. It's, what I show is alerting us to something that has to be taken.
How do you, is this an app?
I'm using apps that come from the county, the federal. Um, some of it, yeah. I mean, I downloaded into a program called ArcGIS, which allows me to take these layers that I get from the state and I get from the county and then I can lay them over photographs that are taken when somebody flies over, which they did in 2021.
If you go to the town website, you can actually access the Hudsonia mapping, which most.
Now, I will tell you that the outlines around the wetlands, those are calculated. That reflects what the town law says about buffers. So those areas that are kind of crisscrossed, those are either DEC wetlands where they're Hudsonia. But we always recognize that somebody has to go on the ground and find hydro soils.
These, these, these wetlands here, which they're going to disappear. Because this was caused by the phone line, there were telephone lines there illegally that I had removed. So they, the telephone people, by going in there back and forth, they can use that.
Let me give you a piece of stuff. No matter how much time goes by, if you pour it out, you will find hydro soils. They've gotten several times. Yeah, the army team out and said, I see what it's something in the head. They poured it down and they said, yeah, it was 100 years ago. Everything goes away.
But in any case.
It's the road that is going in behind you.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
He said he'd move a flag a foot, a flag, a foot over. He'd do a whole lot because.
Wait, what? What's the size of that? What's the footprint of this house? What size is this box here that represents a house?
I don't think he really has. After they devoted development. Compliance to the zoning enforcement officer. Basically, we're working for his location. It's not within the buffers, it's not within a wetland. He's here to explain some provisions. He's not telling us what he's doing with it.
And you're coming in from the bottom this way. Your road is coming up this way, isn't it?
Makes sense?
Yeah, it, yeah.
It's very rare that we did with Sam Akers, where we had them actually give us a building envelope.
As a future, we may be able to request that. Right now, we can't.
It's a, it's a very limited property.
It's really wet.
It's right over here.
No, I can see that you're bringing the road in along the back, along the kind of eastern side of.
Eastern investing road.
Yeah, so that's all in, in between the buffers and it's, and your house is also.
And there was another road in here, many years ago. This used to be a field. It was a golf farm. I don't know, 100, maybe 100, I don't know. I know somebody has photographs from this quarter, from here rather, of, it was either 100 or 100.
Any members of the board have questions? Obviously, we've gone over and over and over, so.
May I fold this up? Yes, thank you.
You can just tell me if you think we're ready to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
Probably did good. I'll be in touch when we schedule a public hearing, probably in May.
One thing that's not in this thing is like a, the driving control file?
We're not requesting it because it's, it's no steep slopes.
So this is the way it is?
And it'll just, if there's anything.
The driveway, you know, has to be called for, it has to be town specs, of course, and it has to be controlled.
Right, what we asked for, you delivered, thank you.
Just ask them.
Don't ask for too much. Okay.
Perfect, I'll be in touch with schedule.
Look, you're touching.
I'll be in touch with schedule public hearing.
We have another sketch plan review. And this is Doran and Ty, oh, I remember we did this before.
Yeah, this is the short term rental.
This is the short term rental. All right, so this is Doran and Young Man, Special Use Permit 23 dash 0563A. Sketch plan review of a special use permit application for transfer of the SUP 20 dash 0563, non-owner occupied short term rental of a four bedroom dwelling in the R3 zoning district located at 11 Schultz Farm Road in Bearswood. And the rep is Adam Easton.
So this is now becoming, this is now becoming an owner occupied, is that?
No.
They're just transferring the ownership, okay.
He bought the house. Remember how we said we were going to see a few like come through and if they, there's, the law is 30 days, so if they give, which notice within 30 days, we, you know. They're real loud, yes, but because there was an SUP in place, we have to acknowledge it.
Okay.
And I have to transfer it.
So unless the board has any questions, I suggest we wait for the review because we've done this before.
So moved.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Mr. Man, I will prepare a resolution that the board will approve at the next planning board meeting and we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Call me if you have any questions.
I, I have only one question. Would I know after I get the resolution, like, do I need to do the same procedure every year now? Or is it done once?
Not, not with us, the planning board. You're going to be pretty quickly done with us at the planning board, but if, within the building department, they do have yearly inspections. They have code enforcement, there's an annual fee. They can direct you who to talk to if, if you want, give me a call next week. Our next meeting is March 30th. That's when the planning board will approve our resolution too. And then I will work on the transfer of the SUP after that and then I will meet you back to the building department and then we'll talk to them. So just paperwork here on out in the next two weeks for us, okay?
Thank you very much, I appreciate your consideration.
Okay.
Hey Lex.
Our next sketch plan review is famous, 137 Holdings LLC, Special Use Permit Number 22 dash 0449A. This is the third sketch plan review of a special use permit application to construct an addition of a second floor master bedroom suite, including stair access and new entry to an existing dwelling in the R5 and scenic overlay zoning districts located at 276 Meads Mountain Road in Woodstock. And North Engineers are the reps. Let me remind the board, I know you guys remember this whole story.
So the only question was, was the glazing?
We're back and forth, the redundant push didn't really help the picture at all because all the glazing is on the other side.
Yep.
In the newest construction. So is Mike Willis here?
And we did send, they were, we did decide to go with reflective, not, non-reflective windows and we did get the spec sheets. And he did send, um, they were made to decide to go with reflective, not, non-reflective windows and we did get the spec sheets. Um, Mr. May had dropped me off the color scheme, which is exactly matching with his current house right now, which is in compliance.
All right, Mike, if we don't have any other comments, we're done with what you got.
So we can, we can schedule a public hearing then?
Yep. So Owen, you and Mike, um, you have given us what we need. You will iron the note later with the final. Look at John, paper, sorry. I will be in touch to schedule a public hearing. You'll probably be in May. We, uh, we don't have any meetings in April. Um, so we're, we're there and we will schedule a public hearing. I will email you guys next week to schedule.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome, Owen.
Okay, so that took care of that. You're gonna give us public hearing forum?
This time.
Now unfinished business. We have to make a motion to approve the draft resolution for IRS Equities Trust, the estate of Betsy Steng. So um.
I move we approve the draft resolution for IRS Equities and Trust on the estate of Betsy Steng. Planning Board number two-three dash zero nine nine five B. Hohenstein SUP twenty-three zero six seven three PB twenty-three oh oh two and forty-three forty-five Mill Hill Road LLC SPR twenty-three oh three six two B. Something?
Second.
Those are all different resolutions, draft resolutions.
On favor?
Aye.
John, give me a line. Thank you. And Judy, can you just make a motion to approve Peter's credit?
I move we approve Peter Cross receiving one hour of continuing ed credit for the streams one oh one per rent. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So Melissa, I noticed you took off the resolution.
No, it's on there. It's in that alone.
Okay.
So it was a big one.
So this is where we are asking the town to uh back us up in uh regarding this gas station on Route twenty-eight. And we're asking the town to back us up in uh contesting the state position that they approved entrance on and off Route twenty-eight. And I made, Melissa added it to the resolution because our real point was that entrance on and off twenty-eight. I mean, if they wanna go up a basin road with a light, that's fine. Our problem is.
Not a good place to do it either.
No, it's, no, it would not be good, but um. I, you know, but we're asking, basically asking the town to, to support us in, in this health, safety and welfare issues, not to have that kind of entrance on twenty-eight at that spot. So, uh, so anything else to that?
No. Yeah, I did it very generic as you guys read it. Um, I think, you know, we, we are, we're asking for support and, and hopefully it'll create a little bit of dialogue and, and a response and, you know, maybe we can have some further conversations. We know they're coming back. We know Mr. Rillhoff is reviewing it right now and will bring them back, but this is, this is a start for your concerns, which have been your concerns from the gate on this place, as long as I've been here, so you all are prepared. Yes, now.
What changed with the sound? It was unintelligible.
We put it onto my computer. We're picking everything up and playing everything back through my computer.
I have no idea why it was.
I thank you. I can understand you and everybody else who's on Zoom except for the board. I don't know what's going on, but uh what was so different about the miking?
It looks, it looks like our big mics that are on the table, all those little four little mics, didn't work. So the only way we were able to get sound was to have it all go through the mic on my computer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it looked into.
Members of the board have questions or anything? You know, we're gonna be taking April off. Um, so our last meeting will be the thirtieth, which is actually a workshop. And uh we are gonna be Doyle, correct?
We are, we are. Uh, Mr. Dennis Doyle, Sir Dennis Doyle.
He's the uh.
He's the Ulster County Planning Board Director. Um, lovely man. He's done things for us. Uh, but he's gonna come talk to us about community character.
He knows more about.
And he wants to see our faces and he's behind her, he's in my house, he must know he will be here with us.
He knows more of um zoning and planning than anyone, anybody else in the area for sure, so that's our schedule.
Since that's a, a critical issue in one of our other cases that we are.
But we're not allowed to say that.
Did you submit this letter to the uh, the Realtors that you were?
No, I'm gonna, that, I guess, we're gonna, you know, I'm gonna work on preparing something for you guys to approve before we do it. So in the next two weeks before we come back on the podium, um, you guys will have an email what we're talking about. We really have to get, we have to let them tell us that's okay. I love it.
What did I say wrong?
That was me. I'm sure it was me. I'm sure it was me.
I will, I will edit that. She writes very good, she has very good proposals, but I will edit her.
Yes, she, she's my wordsmith. Um, yes, we, we make such a great team.
A friend of mine brought that back from Florida for me and it was so perfect.
Typically, I'm the one that's executing for the majority of all of them. I'm flattered. Um, but yeah, so I'm gonna work on that. We just need, we need somebody to say that we can actually execute that.
It's a great idea. I mean, because that now seems to work. Might as well try it out.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, and who's to say we're gonna catch them all, but one is better than not.
Yeah.
Shop lost the bow.
Absolutely. All right, you wanna adjourn?
Okay, welcome to adjourn.
Sound moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, I have a suggestion for you.
Bye, guys.
Great. Since we're.